It's 5:30. I call a special city council meeting to order. We have several really cool things tonight to go over. But let's get on to our agenda. And our first agenda item, we'll have Matt Coats and Chief Harris come to the podium if you would. We've got some pretty cool things going on, some initiatives, and I thought it'd be good for the citizens to hear about how they're addressing a couple of problems, a couple of issues.
Sheriff, yeah, we're always going to stand side by side.
He's bigger than you, you know that.
He is, yes, sir.
He's probably tougher, too.
Faster, tougher, all of those things. Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the council, it's an honor to always stand next to the sheriff because that's the way we are and the way we have been. As you know, I've been here approximately 15 months, but since day one, we have been one. So it is our mission, is our goal, that every single criminal that wants to do business inside E wrath County, inside the city of Stevieville, they are not going to just face the wrath of one law enforcement agency, they're going to face the wrath of all law enforcement agencies. And so since that beginning of time that I have been here, we spend time together daily, we work together daily from patrol, investigations, narcotics, many things that you don't hear about or see about in the news or behind the scenes that are not necessarily classified, but they are things that we are working on that we can't really discuss in the public like that. But including to what the sheriff is going to mention to you also in just a second when I stop is that, how can we save the taxpayers of the city of Stevieville and E wrath County some of their money? How can we put that money to the best use and the best ability that we do that? And we do that together as force multipliers. You will hear from me next in just a minute on how we need to work on and improve on some of those things. But I need everyone to know that we are one, the sheriff's office, the police department, and all law enforcement agencies in E wrath County, work together again to force multiply to go against the bad guys. So sheriff, I'll stop for a second. I'll let you talk about that.
I don't know what else to say. You kind of said it all.
Sorry, Sheriff.
But he's absolutely right. We lean on him, he leans on us. Talking about dispatch now. I'm sure you guys remember when the roof was blown off your building. We had combined dispatch for about two weeks. And then you guys' building was ready, y'all moved out. We had just taken over Dublin. It works with our radio situation. It's needed. Right now, I think we're doing, we're out chasing a guy, we're on the phone with Stevieville because we can't talk. It's something we gotta fix, and we gotta fix quick. Somebody asked me, how fast can you do it? I don't remember how fast you guys moved into our building, but I think it was within a day. Chief told me that y'all did have some costs in that, and there were some things that you guys didn't have that you needed. I think your MDTs, your mobiles, and your cars, your laptops, things of that nature. That's something he and I can work on. We're together, we're ready. You guys tell us when and how by way of money. The only thing I would ask is, we don't lay anybody off, we just do it by attrition. As people leave, we just don't refill those spots. The chief and I haven't spoke. I've got an idea of number, how many we need. I'm sure he has an idea of number, how many we need. There's so many things we gotta talk about on who's going to pay the benefits, insurance. I think that's where you guys come in. So having said that, I'll turn it back over to the chief. If you have any questions for me, I'll stay here as long as you need me to and answer any questions I can.
So ladies and gentlemen, we, in 2020, in a COVID year, which is not a normal year for law enforcement in E wrath County and the city of Stevieville, just in the city of Stevieville alone, we answered over 15,000 calls for service. We self-initiated over 15,000 calls where we said, we need to talk to that individual, or we need to stop that vehicle and determine what's going on. So that's over 30,000 dispatch transactions, as the sheriff talks about. That doesn't count the sheriff's office. That is merely the city of Stevieville Police Department. So we've got a lot of work to do to continue our joint initiatives. And not only with dispatch, but also with criminal investigations, also with narcotics investigations. Those two rank very highly in conjunction with patrol. But you see on the news, you hear talks about multiple pursuits and different things, some of the crime coming into this area as the city of Stevieville grows. And we're going to be there together as one to tackle those and present those issues to all of you and to the commissioners' court as one and as a joint. Because we believe that that's in the best interest of the safety of the citizens and visitors to the city of Stevieville and E wrath County. So any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Specifically, the issue is initially will be joint dispatch. And the representative from the council and the commissioners' court met last week, or was it this week? It was this week?
Monday, yes.
Monday, how time flies. That is yesterday.
Yes, sir.
What if I've been doing since? Oh, it is.
It is.
And we visited about the potential of joint dispatch as a way of streamlining, cutting costs, and yet having a more unified approach. And the number two item is going to help do that as well, is that correct? And so they, the task was given to the sheriff and the chief to come up with a plan on how to implement that. And item number two will help them accomplish that. So anything else you want to say about one? Do you want to go straight to two?
No, if I could just mention one more thing about one, and related to that. So the city managers asked us to end the commissioners' court, so we presented jointly there Monday morning. The same thing that we are doing here is that in the next 30 days, we will have a presentation, a joint presentation, on what that would look like, what that cost is, what that model should be going forward. There's tons of them that are accomplished throughout the country, in this state of those. And we both have overseen and worked with joint dispatch operations in our previous agencies that we both have worked for. So we have a lot of work to do in a very short amount of time to hammer out those details. But what you will hear next from me involves a city of Stevieville issue, and that's related to just our communication system in general. But will, which will assist the entire county and everything going forward. But that's a little bit more in depth and a different presentation, so I'll spare the sheriff from having to stand here with me on that one.
It was interesting, because when we had our conversation, both gentlemen jumped right in and said, we'll make this happen, we'll figure out how to do it, do it in a financially responsible way, and also improve services to citizens of E wrath and Stevieville, Texas, which I appreciated a lot, I really did. There was only one request, no, it was a demand, that the sheriff put on, it was he's not going to be in charge of the dispatch.
I'm not sure where that puts meatballing, but me either.
They made some recommendations on how to do that, and there's, they sound like they have some good ideas. So thank you very much for what y'all do cooperatively. It is, it'd be easy to have territorialism, you know, stepping on people's toes and whatever. And it was obvious from our meeting the other day, you guys work well together, and we appreciate that, appreciate the county's participation, you particularly sheriff. Anybody have any questions?
No, I'd just say anytime that municipalities and government organizations can create efficiencies and synergies saves the taxpayer. So appreciate your willingness to work on this. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, I've been here in this position longer than most have. And I want to tell you how refreshing it is to see the two of y'all together, obviously working together and cooperating for the benefit of the taxpayer. I am a resident of the city of Stevieville, but I also reside and pay taxes to the E wrath County. And so the most beneficial use of our tax dollars, city and county, benefits all of us. And I appreciate that, and I appreciate y'all's willingness to try to put this together and try to make it successful for all of us, including your departments, because I think your departments will benefit from this also. And I think this is a huge step forward for city-county relationships and the future of that, of those joint cooperative efforts on both sides. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Mayor, in other places that we've lived and been, we have seen joint operations like this put together. And I want to congratulate you for getting together. And this is one of the things we've talked about for a long time, here at least the last two years. And thank you. Thank you for getting together in this spirit of cooperation that you've got. We know that this can work, and we've seen it work in other places, and it's been a great savings and a benefit to the citizens of the community and county. So, great move. Thank you.
I'll just say thank you for working together. I know we've, we've had discussions about this for the two years I've been here. And it's always been about, well, when this happens, we're going to look at that. When this happens, we're going to look at that. So I appreciate that you've taken it and said, we're not going to wait for anything to happen, we're just going to do it. And relationships between the city and county have always, always been a topic of discussion amongst us. And I think it's very appropriate that it's the peacekeepers that are taking the first step to bring that relationship closer. I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Thank you, gentlemen. You have another presentation to make, and what we're going to do, just to make sure that we have a full house voting on this first item. What we're going to do is we're going to make, let the chief make his presentation, item number two, and then we're going to, then we're going to recess and canvass the votes. And I'll commit, I'll appoint a committee here in a little bit to do that. Then we'll come back and vote on your request.
Yes, sir. Again, Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the council, I became your chief 15 months ago. And just a short three months after arriving here, was involved in my first emergency situation, my first emergency call, where I was on scene with a armed burglary suspect in Parkview Apartments, where myself and a patrol sergeant were the only two that were available to handle that call. At the same time, 100 yards down the road, we're working in multiple, multiple vehicle accident, a three-car accident at Dale and Northwest Loop, which has radio traffic tied up, which has most of the officers tied up. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about that and possibly maybe play you a little bit of radio traffic related to that. But that day, I tried for two and a half minutes to, one, get help, two, communicate on the radio, just so someone could know that the chief has an armed burglary suspect cornered in an apartment complex. Three, I needed to know that someone was coming to help me and the sergeant that was with me. Four, the officers that are 100 yards down the road do not hear that traffic. Dispatch does not hear that traffic for two and a half minutes. There's a highway patrolman and a deputy sheriff responding to assist us thanks to landline phone calls. Both the sheriff's office and the police department, we spend too much time relying on our phones, talking to each other, to communicate effectively in the city and this county, and that's going to cost us dearly. It's going to affect public safety, it affects officer's safety. And it has been my number one issue since I have arrived here, unbeknownst to COVID, protests, buildings, those type of things that we've also had to deal with at the same time. But since May 8th, 2020, at 5:59 PM, I have said, we've got to do something different. So over all of the years, we've been able to, to have a radio system where we've had to piecemeal pieces of it together. How do we buy a new repeater this year? How do we buy a new portable, one portable radio this year? How do we extend the life of the system we have that makes us, get us through this day? There is not a day that goes by that since I have been the police chief, and especially since May 8th, that radio traffic has been to be repeated. It has to be said twice, it has to be called in via the telephone. Today's been an extremely busy day. Yesterday, multiple shots fired, calls, different things like that that we had to handle via our cell phone. It's an extreme officer's safety issue. Same thing happened to the city of Granbury, 2013. Most horrific thing that can happen to any law enforcement agency is they have a deputy sheriff who's shot and killed. They did not have interoperability at that particular time. They could not handle that situation, which became a rolling gun battle that ended up at City Hall. And that cost them. The city administration then said, fix it and fix it to the point that where anybody can jump on to that system and create a regional radio network that is interoperability for everyone and that you can, you can, anybody can jump on and communicate when they're needed. So what I'm asking for permission tonight to do is to, to go forward and seek an interlocal agreement with the city of Granbury for the Granbury Regional Radio Network and a systems purchase agreement to revamp, redo our entire system beginning October 1. Not, this is not in this budget year, this is going forward. It is to have the ability to, to pay that out, just as we do with our patrol cars, as we do with our cameras, to extend that for the life of this system should last us for 40 to 50 years and interoperability for the, for the county. There's a lot to it. It's very complex. We've been working on it again since May of last year. City of Granbury signed their, their city council, mayor, everyone agreed and proved that, and they signed their agreement yesterday and went to go forward. What this allows, without getting technical in terms, is they will spend millions of dollars on a regional core system that allows all the surrounding counties and cities to jump on board with that, basically at infrastructure cost 1 to 1.5 million or so for the radio systems, for your vehicle, for your hip. Because right now, if I'm inside the hospital, if I'm inside this building, and I cannot transmit the dispatch that's two blocks away, I will be lucky if they can hear me, if they can receive me. And so it's, it's a number one priority for me as your chief, and there's a lot of moving parts to that. There's a lot of work I need to, permission to go forth with our city attorney and to see if this is our best. But in almost a year's worth of research, we believe this is our best option to completely revamp our radio system. Again, it's, it's a lot to ask for. It's, it's extremely important. So I, I can't get much more passionate to know that I spend a lot of my time out with the community, a lot of my time at my desk, a lot of my, I spend all of my time listening to the radio, but I'm not out there every day communicating on it. But when I communicate on it, it can't be received. And when this happens to me, we'll see if this works on the speaker. I am unit number 400. That is my radio.
400 PD requesting the channel. 400 PD requesting the channel. 400 PD, copy this portable requesting the channel. Clear the air.
So that's one, that's, that's a few seconds of two and a half minutes. I need your help, gentlemen. And the city needs your help, the police officers need your help. Those are out there for 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Need to know that when they push this button, they're going to, we're going to know where they are. It's going to go off. We're going to know where they are, we're going to know that they need help, and we're going to be able to communicate. And we've outlived and outlasted our current radio system. Questions?
What happens when your, if some equipment goes down, now how do you get repairs?
I'm sorry?
How do you get repairs on your current system? You talked, talked about that the other day when we met. It wasn't this Monday, it was last week. But give us some ideas, like how you get parts, where you buy parts, et cetera.
Amazon. It's been years since this portable was, was made. We, we, at some, most of the times, we end up having to just retire it and then seek that. And so I, we do want to clarify, on this system, by joining a regional radio network, where normally this, a new portable radio would be between $5,000 and $8,000, we would be at the $2,000 mark because of a joint initiative amongst multiple law enforcement agencies. And so we get the majority of our parts off Amazon.
So what you're doing is you're buying used parts, you're using equipment, tearing apart to buy a part?
As long as we can find them.
As long as you can find them.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions for the chief? Yes, sir.
Chief, I understand the importance of communication and especially for officers in the field. Will this system be available to our fire and EMS as well?
That's correct. So this, every single way that you can communicate, UHF, VHS, 67800 megahertz, Wi-Fi, cellular phone, internet portals, these portable radios, mobile radios, and our base station allow anyone to communicate that we allow on that system to communicate in all of those venues. And so whether I'm in the basement of this building, and so in our last test demonstration, Mr. Mayor, which it was actually prior to our last meeting, we, we sat here in the training room and talked to Broken Arrow Oklahoma Police Department via all of those capabilities, as if we were in the rooms together. Yes, sir. So this system is used by the military, this system with L3 Harris technologies. And for the record, no relation whatsoever, period, for the record, is that they do NASA, the military. My previous federal agency is transitioning to that, Royal Canadian Mounted Police, Miami MetroDade, I mean, and the list goes on and on throughout the country. It is the best of the best.
Well, when you call the mounted police, come down, I want to see that.
Yes, sir.
When they show up. Anybody else?
Chief, I think I understood what you were saying, but just to clarify, so I know you dispatch for Charlton as well.
Yes, sir.
Does this mean they have to buy, they have to agree to buy new equipment, or?
No, sir. They do not.
Okay.
We can, we will work with their existing equipment, same with the sheriff's office and everyone.
Okay.
However, if I can clarify, it is in their best interest to spend maybe $100,000 on new portable radios because of the capabilities that it has, interoperability. But they do not have to, no, sir.
That was a message to Dr. Hurley, right?
Correct. They do not.
Anybody else? Questions?
And to make sure I understand, so tonight, we'll be authorizing the purchase?
We're authorizing, we'll go ahead and say it's a sale.
To, authorizing basically to the ability to go forth and, and work on doing that. A systems purchase agreement, you know, obviously, there's a lot to work out with the, the money and, but two steps to that. And the system purchase agreement is an interlocal agreement with the city of Granbury and that regional network. And then what would that look like going forward? There'll be multiple steps I would come before you phases in that portion.
So we're not, we're not authorizing all of the funds tonight, it's just?
Or any of the funds. I mean, we're talking future budget cycles, too.
We are, from October 1 on, yes, sir. And approximately $100,000 a year would be this required.
What would be the, so if for some reason, you know, Granbury thinks it's 1 to 1.5, but it's 5 million, then we can, we're not taking a step forward where we're committed to anything at this point.
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir, not at all.
Anybody else? Okay, what we're going to do is we're going to, we'll vote on here, I'm going to let the new council members vote on your item. It's a first, first agenda item. So we're going to go on to consider approval resolution canvassing the votes. And so I'm going to appoint a committee, and we'll recess in a minute, let them go off and canvass the votes. That'll be Justin, Alan, and Brandon. And so y'all go back there if you would, and maybe y'all select, y'all select a chair, go with Stacy, and determine if the votes can be canvassed tonight. We'll come back in, appoint council members, then we'll address this vote.
All right, you'll raise your right hand, please, or pee after me.
Aye, Leanne Durfee.
Aye, Leanne Durfee.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office
The duties of the office.
Of city council member
Of city council member.
Of the city of Stevieville
Of the city of Stevieville.
And will to the best of my ability
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Golly, Randy's being really gentlemanly tonight.
He knows he's gonna be so with me.
He's been waiting for a female to get back up here. Mayor, just, so you speak loud, be sure, of all the people, I'm just gonna speak loud.
You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. Aye, Darren Tressel.
Aye, Darren Tressel.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office
The duties of the office.
Of city council member
Of city council member.
Of the city of Stevieville
Of the city of Stevieville.
And will to the best of my ability
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Come take your spot.
Aye, Ricky Thurman.
Aye, Ricky Thurman.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office
The duties of the office.
Of city council member
Of city council member.
Of the city of Stevieville
Of the city of Stevieville.
And will to the best of my ability
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, Gerald Cook
Aye, Gerald Cook.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office
The duties of the office.
Of council member
Council member.
Of the city of Stevieville
City of Stevieville.
And will to the best of my ability
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend
Protect, preserve, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Sorry?
Anything else? All right, now we have a full council back up here, all nine, and so, we're gonna come back to item number three, and hear if we have a nomination, a recommendation.
May I move the purchase of the purchase agreement as presented?
A motion and a second. Brandon, was that you?
Yes, sir.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Good job, first, first, first vote. You had to make, it went along 100%, unanimous, it's unanimous decision. Thank you very much. All right, we have, we take, we're down to item numbers five, and both outgoing councilmen were not able to be here tonight, had other obligations. So, we'll go to item number six, incoming councilmembers. Address the audience, you have your, your turn.
Yes?
I'm Leanne Durfee, and I'm very happy to be up here. Thank you for my friends and my family that are all here to support me and that have supported me through this journey. And I look forward to being a part of the city council and helping make Stevieville a much better place than it already is.
Thank you, ma'am. Darren?
I'm Darren Tressel. I'm extremely excited that my kids have made it through this point in the evening quietly. So, about the best, best behaved I've ever seen them. So, I'm excited to work with all you guys, looking forward to it, and I'm ready to get started.
Welcome, city council. We're excited you're being here.
Thanks.
We'll appoint committees, I believe, is next week, right? Next week, so we'll, we'll get, have been in conversation before that happens. All right, with that, that's the end of our agenda for tonight. I do wanna say thank you to all the first responders in the room, both for the city and the county. It's, it's great to see y'all here and working hard together as a team. Thank you very much. With that, it is now 6:03, and we will stand adjourned.